...nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, according to our agenda, at seven o'clock, we'll just have a public hearing on Resolution Number O- O-two dash two eighteen and Resolution Number O-three dash two eighteen. Resolution is what we read last month for Resolution for increase in the water and sewer. We read that last month, and this time we're to have a public hearing, and the Resolution reads the public hearing is being held for questions and comments for residents on proposed Resolution Number O-two dash two eighteen and Resolution Number O-three dash two eighteen. The Resolution Number O-two dash two eighteen proposes to increase the quarterly minimum charge per unit for public water from thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents to forty dollars, and Resolution Number O-three dash two eighteen proposes to increase the quarterly minimum charge per unit for public sewer from forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents to forty-five dollars effective July first, two thousand and eighteen. Both Resolutions were introduced on March the twenty-sixth, at twenty, uh, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. The public hearing was advertised in Carroll County Times on April the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Are there any questions or comments for those two resolutions? Hearing none, these hasn't been thirty days, and the council will have to vote, it has to be at least thirty days, the council will vote on these two resolutions on May the twenty-first at our next council meeting. At this time, we'll close the hearing for the water and sewer resolutions, and I'm going to open up the hearing for our proposed budget for FY eighteen nineteen. Okay, the public hearing is being conducted to consider comments and questions for interested citizens regarding to proposed two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen physical year operating budget. The proposed budget for expenditures and revenues is one million, thirty-one dollars, one million, thirty-one dollars, one hundred and seventeen dollars.
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, sorry. Wish it was that cheap. The town tax rate was proposed to remain at thirty-five cents per hundred at full assessment value for the town of Union Bridge. The town property tax rate is proposed to remain at seventy-five cents per one hundred per assessed value. Public hearing was advertised in the Carroll County Times on April the second, two thousand and eighteen. Are there any comments or questions regarding the proposed budget for this coming year? Hearing none, we are in line for a motion.
No.
No. A motion, okay. Okay, we're going to close this, and we'll close this public hearing at this time, no questions.
I've got one question.
Okay.
Was there any thought, like, given the having some kind of budget for mosquito controls with mosquitoes?
There is no mosquito control in the state of Maryland anymore. They discontinued that years ago, and there's nobody that sprays because of...
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we're going to close the public hearing on that at this time, and we will open and go to our regular council meeting. Okay, we'll open our meeting with approval of the minutes and operating statements from last month, from March.
I'll make a motion that we approve the operating statements, March twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen council meeting minutes, April ninth, two thousand and eighteen work session minutes, and Quantum's financial station, financial statement for March two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, or any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Noes? Motion's carried. Okay, now we'll go back, go back to our budget ordinance. At this time, we had no questions on our public hearing. We need a motion to adopt the Budget Ordinance three fourteen dash B, physical year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget and expenditures and revenues for one million, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars, with the town tax rate to remain at thirty-five cents per full, for a hundred dollars for full value assessment of the town of Union Bridge, and the town property tax rate will remain at seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value.
You're asking for a...
Yes, mhm.
I make a motion.
Okay.
You want to do it, Donald? Oh, okay. I make a motion that we, um, okay, I'm totally lost. What is the word I'm looking for?
Accept.
Except, Budget Ordinance Number three fourteen B, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen budget for expenditures and revenues of one million, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars, with the tax rate to remain at thirty-five cents per one hundred dollars of full value assessment of property in the town of Union Bridge. The town personal property tax will remain at seventy-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Noes? Okay, the budget dis- ordinance will take effect in twenty days after date of signing. Moving very long. Okay, other things on my report is, May the sixteenth will be the Carroll County, Frederick County Chapter Meeting. We have a combined meeting with both chapters every year before we go to Ocean City for our conference. Conference will be the second week of June this year instead of the fourth week because they use the conference center in Ocean City for one of the polling places, so every four years, our conference gets moved up two weeks ahead of time, so we'll be meeting in Ocean City early, but our Carroll County, Frederick County Chapter Meeting will be in Mountain Area, the same as always. This year, it will be at the Fire Hole instead of the restaurant downtown, it gives us more room, so we'll be attending that, those who can. Some good news, legislature this year did pass our highway user revenue bills, both the House and Senate passed them. It's, uh, it's not going to be immediate full funding, but what it does, it goes from twenty nineteen, twenty, or twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, and there'll be increased funding for those years, and at the end of those five years, we're going to be back up to where we were when it started, so in case anybody wants to look at us, it'll be up here. It shows a graph here of FY oh eight, where we were here, and then when Governor O'Malley took our funding, we went from here all the way down here, and we were straight lined for the last nine years. We at one time got just a little bit over eighty-eight thousand dollars for our highway user revenues, that was our share, and at one time, when he took us down and took our money, we went from that to six thousand dollars a year. So if you understand why our streets and highways weren't being taken care of, this is why. So we will be getting back up to normal for the next, it's going to take another five years to get there. Donald's done a really good job of trying to take care of our streets. The six thousand dollars, you know, when you start looking at these kind of things, it's not even hard enough to take care of one major snowstorm, so not just us, but the whole state of Maryland, the municipalities have been suffering over the years for this. We spent a lot of time this year with the Legislative Committee and different people going to Annapolis for the public hearings down there and the Senate bill hearings. The one day we was there, we had like eighty-eight different municipal, or eighty-eight people at one meeting, we had over a hundred at the second meeting when we went to the Senate, so it did pay off, numbers pay off, it's a lot of trips up and down the road, but it was, it was well, well worth it. The MML's three priority bills that are listed on here, all three priority bills went in favor at MML this year, so we're pretty, pretty satisfied with that. The other bill was, one of the other bills was protection of personal data under Maryland's Public Information Act, and this was if, if people in the community worked on different committees and stuff, and we had a list of your, your names, your email addresses and everything, without this bill being enacted upon, all your information was open to the public for anything, you know, you could get these mailings and stuff, and so MML fought this bill, we were successful. The other bill was retain authority over small cell equipment locating and permitting within our municipalities, and that's to do with, if you look at this, you see where these cellphone companies are coming in, instead of putting up tires, they're putting equipment on your poles in town without permission, and we fought that, and that was successful. So for them to do that within the municipalities, they have to come to the towns right now, so we're going to keep a very close eye on that because that, I know they're going to keep fighting it and, you know, so that they can just put them up wherever they want to. They can out in the counties, but they cannot do it within the municipalities unless they come to us first, so that's another bill, so all three of our priority bills was very successful this year, a lot of hard work down there, and I give a lot of people a lot of credit because going down there and sitting on those Senate hearings and it's very painful, so it worked. Our next, and John's going to touch on this on his report, but we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with a company that wants to, has purchased a farm next door here, the Bucky property, and he wanted to put up solar panels, so May the seventeenth, before the planning and zoning meeting, which starts at six-thirty, at five-thirty, these people are going to be here, to be here to answer some questions and open to the public, it's going to be an open house here in this office, so if anybody has any questions for him, and then they're going to go over everything they have to with the Planning and Zoning Commission with the process that they have to take, so if anybody is, wants to come down and just look at the project and everything, you're more than welcome to and ask some questions. Also on, and I know you guys are going to talk about this, but May the fifth is the Union Bridge Days or Fun Days, or whatever you want to call it, and there's a lady that lives out on Route seventy-five here, Bonnie Keys, the lady that we called her Butterfly Lady, she is going to be available that day to, to talk to people about the importance of the butterflies and talk about the milkweed down there and everything, and about the butterflies, so she's not exactly sure what time she's going to be here, but she will be here sometime that day for half an hour, forty-five minutes, or whatever she can make available and talk to whoever's there. I told her what time the ducks were going to take off, so there will probably be some time between that and the time that, you know, she might want to, if there's a group of people there, she might want to talk to, so she's very excited about doing that, and she says that we've had, we've got one of the best parks around, and with the butterflies, it's just amazing, so she's all excited about that, she's really into this butterflies, and we have people coming from all over around the state just to check these butterflies out, and I think she's done an amazing job with that, and of course, Donald does a good job coordinating when we can mow the field and when we can't, because there are certain times that it can't be mowed because of the milkweed, and we don't want to disturb the caterpillars and the butterflies, so he does a real good job at that, so. That's about all that I have on my report right now, and we'll go into John's report.
All right, well, you know, as we reported last month, we had conducted the first meeting with the solar facility folks, and we had a second meeting that was attended by Council President Wilson, the mayor, Dawn, myself, and a number of team members, and people from the county as well, and I guess we didn't learn a lot more about the proposal, but they pressed us a little bit for the process, how to plug into the town to get review of their project and kind of get some feedback, and we were reluctant to give a lot of feedback because obviously that has to work its way to the Planning Commission and the council, but what we did suggest to them is the place to start is to bring their plan to the Planning Commission, which they intend to do for the first time on May the seventeenth. That meeting starts at six-thirty. We talked, or they suggested or asked us whether we thought a community outreach would be a good idea, and it ended up that they'd like to do this open house right before the Planning Commission meeting, so that will give the public, the Planning Commission, the council, and I would encourage the council to go because this will answer some of the questions that we really can't answer yet, an opportunity sort of informally to get a sense for what they want to do, the timing, how they want to do it, where it's going to be located, how it works, and then, of course, you're welcome to stay to the Planning Commission meeting, they're going to re-present that more formally to the Planning Commission. The idea would be for the Planning Commission to absorb that, whatever time they need, it may not be the same night, probably would not be the same night that they would give, render an opinion or a recommendation on it, but it would, it would sort of get the developer into the system to lay out the plans, and from there, I guess ultimately it will work itself to council. Exactly in what form and what's going to be needed and what types of approvals, that's still a little bit up in the air, but the bottom line is that Planning Commission and council are going to need to weigh in on, on support or lack of support for this, and then the question of whether, well, let me back up a little bit, you all have the color drawing now, which we didn't have last month, and just to walk through that quickly, the bar, the dark bars are basically the solar panels, and what's in town would be first across the street from us here is in orange, that's all in town, and the rear orange line then proceeds down your chart to the blue area, everything inside that line in blue is also in the town, so you can see the town limits are kind of squared off there in orange and blue. Everything outside of the orange and blue is in the county, and a substantial amount of this, probably more than half, is also proposed to be in the county, and it also moves across Main Street into that purple area, which is also in the county, but you'll see the black bars there too, which represent more solar panels. The questions, I guess, would be the orange is zoned at this point for, in our six thousand zone, which is residential, and it would, is inconsistent in the master plan for that to be a solar facility. The blue in town is industrial general, I believe, and that would require Board of Zoning Appeals approval in the town. The area in the county, which is mostly the pinkish color, is industrial restricted, and that is a permitted, a solar facility is a permitted use in the county, so that wouldn't require any special approvals. The, what has been explained to us is that because this is a use controlled by the Maryland Public Service Commission, it's exempt from our zoning rules, which I'm still researching, but I think that's probably correct. I just want to know, I just want to, I guess, convince myself and you all that that is correct, but I am familiar with overhead transmission lines, electrical lines, I've done some work on those, and they are exempt from local zoning, and the idea is that these are essential utilities, and the state, in the bigger picture, does not want these types of facilities being bogged down by local influences because they're more regional, the need is more regional, so we'll check on that, but in any event, the developer has explained to us that their experience, that even when they go to the Maryland Public Service Commission, if the locality is not in favor of it, they're not likely to get it, and so they've come to us and asked us to put this through some kind of process that would get them the support of the town, and that's kind of where we are, where we are now, so we'll hear more about that, I guess, at the open house and the Planning If you have questions now, I mean, basic questions, maybe we can help based on the meetings we've had, but I think the real information will come when the developer shows up and makes a presentation. So, any questions or discussion about that? Okay.
Thank you, John.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, public comments and concerns. Sherry.
Sherry Thompson, the young and pretty junior bridge. This Saturday night, we have our bingo night, it's going to be held at Springdale Propitory School, it's going to be in the Ziegler Hall, doors open at five, the games start at seven, got all kinds of good things like prize wise and stuff. We've got our duck derby coming up, I'm going to skip over that and jump to June sixteenth, we are helping Pipe Creek Friends on Saturday from one to four assisting, it's, we'll be assisting them in a plant, planting event that they're having, that's a free family event, so they've reached out and asked us for some help, so we're going to help them with that.
Where are you planning? Where are you planning?
They're actually going to have seedlings and then help the kids transplant them into other little individual containers and take them home.
Oh.
Okay, all right. Also, we have the duck derby coming up, and I'm really excited, we've got a hundred and sixty dollars worth of gift certificates for the first five ducks that cross the finish line, so you'll get an insulated lunch bag with gift certificates totaling a hundred and sixty dollars, so it's going to really be a lot of fun, we've had a lot of a good response with it, and then we also have a challenge out there from John Woodyak, and he says he has okay, okay already, two challenges, if each town council member gets one lucky duck, him and Marion will buy a fifteen flying flock, which is a fifty dollar purchase, so I have a commitment so far from Edgar and Amy, I just need to hear if Laura, Ellen, and Donald are on board to accept the challenge, they're five dollars a duck.
I'll take two.
Okay.
I'll let you do it.
Okay, all right, Donald?
Okay.
Okay.
You pay five dollars.
Five dollars for one duck, yeah, and what they are, they're numbered, so you just, we just pick them randomly, and we have a list with all the numbers, and your name goes right beside that, and then when, if you win, we'll contact you and let you know if you're not there, so. The second challenge is if Mayor Perry Jones and Commissioner candidate Brett Grossnickel buys a fifteen flying flock each, they will buy another fifteen flying flock.
So what's a flying flock?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars?
That's fifteen ducks.
You must think we make a lot of money.
No, 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 that's not me, this is, I'm just, don't shoot me, I'm just reading the, what was sent to me.
This is John's challenge.
Yes.
Brett's using his money for his campaign, and I'm using my money going to everybody else's campaign.
So...
Well, he made twenty-five.
Well, I, I will bring that back to him, he said...
Well, of course, I don't know what Brett wants to do, I mean, you know.
Okay, I'll contact Brett and see, because I thought maybe he'd be here tonight, but I thought that was pretty kind of fun, so I like that, but anyway, these are the ducks, and I think it's going to be a fun day, and like, we are partnering up with Union Bridge Business Association, so there's going to be a lot of things going on that day with the pet parade, and I think there's going to be some vendor booths set up, so I think it's going to be a fun day, and we're just taking baby steps, we didn't want to go real big this first time out, because we want to make it...
May fifth?
May fifth, I keep wanting to say August fifth, because that would be my anniversary, so, all right, so...
Yeah, if I would, if I would do that and attend all these other events, people want me to attend for a campaign, I'd have to work as mayor for the next ten years for, for nothing, because I, that's how much I'd be in the hole.
Yeah, and we're working, we're still working on the, the town banners, trying to get a proof from them to see what it looks like if we just go with just the white on, I just told them blue for right now, but, so that's still a work in progress, but again, this funding goes towards whatever you guys need, so it's a group effort, so...
Check with Brett and see what he says.
I will let you know, okay, thank you all.
Okay, anybody else? Our officer, Brian?
Good evening. Between the dates of March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen to April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, the sheriff's office had approximately sixty calls for service within town limits of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, if it had been six calls, required a report, and those were as follows. On the first of April, at approximately six forty-two PM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of South Main Street in reference to a domestic incident during the, during this time, it was learned that the incident occurred in the three hundred block of East Broadway Street. During the investigation, it was learned that a juvenile was shot multiple times with an aerosol pellet gun, also known as a BB gun. Suspect was apparently threatened, or also apparently threatened to burn down the residence. Victim was checked by medical personnel at Carroll Hospital Center and was cleared of injuries. Investigation continues. On April seventh, at three thirty-five AM, deputies responded to the unit block of North Farquhar Street in reference to an overdose. During the investigation, it was learned that two individuals were unresponsive in the backyard. It was later determined that the subjects had overdosed on alcohol. At that time, case was closed. On April twenty-first, at approximately eight oh five PM, deputies responded to the unit block of East Algar Street in reference to a disorderly subject. During the investigation, it was learned that the subjects were arguing about a parking Resident, the resident stated that the, during the altercation, the other suspect caused damage to the front door of the residence, they were referred to the commissioner to file their own charges. Investigation continues on that one as well. On April twenty-second, at approximately seven forty-three PM, deputies observed a suspicious condition in the one hundred block of South Main Street. It was observed that a vehicle and a juvenile on a bicycle appeared to be, appeared to make contact for only a few seconds before departing ways quickly. A traffic stop was completed on the vehicle for equipment valid, violations, excuse me, it's been a long week. Upon making contact with the operator, it was observed that the driver was extremely nervous, driver gave consent to the search of the vehicle, and upon a search, it was discovered that the juveniles that were in the vehicle were in possession of tobacco products. Traffic and civil citations were issued, and that case is also closed. Two other incidents were, one was on Benidham Street, North Benidham, or correction, South Benidham Street, that was an abandoned vehicle, and the other one was a unregistered abandoned vehicle in the town parking lot. Both cars were impounded, and from there, there's, well, one was released, and the other one is still pending contact with the owner, so with that, other notes, the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen, the sheriff's office has completed approximately eighty-six traffic stops within the town limits. Violation wise, I will say, within the past three months between both towns, I'm probably at approximately three hundred and fifty violations issued between both towns, so that's, so eighty-six traffic stops doesn't mean that it's one violation, it's multiple, so. Also, on April eighth, the sheriff's office completed a saturation patrol within town limits in the afternoon. It was approximately about an hour where five deputies conducted numerous enforcements within the town limits. During that time, six violations were issued to motorists who were in violation of traffic laws. In the future, these types of patrols will continue, and again, it just shows that we're coming out into the community and working together to accomplish some stuff, so other than that, that's all I got.
Good job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, anyone else, public has anything for us tonight?
Okay, hearing none, we're going to start our committee reports, Ellen.
Hold on, see if I have anything. Oh, yes. April tenth was the reading of the If I Were Mayor essays, this has been our best year yet, we had, we started the day with three thousand one hundred and eighteen essays, but they realized that there were a couple envelopes where they only counted the number that one teacher had put in, so there was actually more than that, which is the most there has ever been. So there was actually more than that, which is the most there has ever been. 240 of those essays came from Carroll County. 41 of those came from Elmer Wolf. Go Elmer Wolf. That's the best we've had from them, I think, for a while. Very proud of that. The winner for District 11, which is all of Carroll County, came from.
Sykesville.
Sykesville Freedom, is it Freedom Springs or Freedom something Elementary School? I forgot to bring that paper with me. So, but I'll be down there in May for the awards ceremony on the 17th. Other than that, the EAC Environmental Awareness Awards have been chosen, and I'm not sure, I think they were supposed to be on the 19th, but I think they changed it for some reason. And that's about all I have right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended the CCRC meeting where the budget was passed, and I have submitted lights for PE. I also, I flagged down the man from Potomac Edison to talk about some of the lights that had not been fixed in town, and I was schooled in the ways of how they receive and respond the calls. He said, "Our town is very good about writing up what the service call is. They mostly need just the pole number, and they have a GPS system." And he showed me his computer system, how they can pull up with the correct pole number any light and tell, know exactly where it is. Unfortunately, not all of our poles have adequate numbers on them. And I know one of the poles I was reporting, I think, three times, had the number four on it. It was the only number on the pole. And he said he thinks that's like a Verizon pole, so he couldn't find the light, even though I had given a description of how to find it. It was in an alley, so, you know. But I showed him exactly where it was, and five minutes later, I saw him up in his cherry picker fixing it. So that light has been fixed, and besides that, I have nothing else.
Okay. That school was the Freedom Elementary. So, yeah. Edgar?
We put the center out on rebids on, let's see here, March the 28th at 5:00 PM. The closing deadline for the bid was April 19th at 10 o'clock. We had, at that time, we did not see any bids at all. So now, talk to Mike, and we're going to break it down. He's getting prices on the windows and doors for right now, so we'll find out how it's going to be handled after that, so.
Okay.
That's about all I have.
All right. Thank you. Donald?
Okay, well, no more pushing snow, so that's a plus. We were, be start working on our potholes. There's a number around town here, so we'll be correcting that. I will be getting with Stan Ball to get some, to give him the different streets that need paving. And it's really great news that, to see we're going to get our highways or user funds back. I can't, you know, I just, I can't imagine O'Malley Ray created 40 new taxes, if I remember right, and raised 40 more that was, we already had. I can't even imagine what he'd have been like if he'd been a president. You know, it just, it'd be a nightmare. But anyway, we do have one new 10,000 mile, 10,000 pound sign coming into, over Quaker Hill.
Yes.
And so.
So it'd be five others to go up wherever you want.
Like five others, we're going to be put up for this one ton limit that we have now. So you, if you see a little bit larger trucks, it's okay. Not dump trucks, trucks and trailers, but just larger trucks. So that's about it.
Amy?
I personally have not received any water calls or sewer calls since our last meeting. I'm assuming Dawn may have had a few. The billing program for our water and sewer requires 82 days or greater in a billing cycle. The town read the water and sewer meters earlier than usual this quarter due to vacation. Even though this meter reading had 83 days in its billing cycle, the computer program didn't calculate the rates correctly. The town fixed the program glitch and mailed the corrected bills on April 16th. Letters were sent out notifying residents of the error. We'd like to thank everyone for working with us during this issue. Your patience has been most gracious. Thank you. We are having a Save Our Streets Drug Awareness Expo meeting tomorrow night, 6:30, here at the town hall, just in case anyone would like to attend. During the planning and zoning meeting on the 19th, the 2018 annual report was, annual report was approved from the county planning office. It was presented with an overview and then approved by the commission. Representative from the villages were here at the planning meeting to discuss the special, excuse me, special purpose preliminary subdivision plan. Union Bridge Homes LLC wanted a motion for the special preliminary plan, which it did not receive yet. It will be taken back to Wormawald to discuss and revise. It was not denied, just so you know that, it was not denied. It was motioned as a continuance. The Planning and Zoning Commission asked to improve the profile and receive it two weeks prior to the next meeting, so you know. That's it.
All right. Thank you. And while we're talking about roads, Donald and I had a meeting with the county roads department this past month. Their tentative date right now is November. They're going to close the bridge on Shepherd's Mill Road because it needs a new bridge. The bridge is in bad shape. They've been planning this bridge for like the last seven or eight years, and we've been going back and forth when they're going to close the road and everything. That road will be closed, and they're saying they can do it in two months. I don't know whether they can or not. So there will be additional traffic in Union Bridge during the, during the time that that road is closed. So we'll not be able to take the shortcut across there. Hopefully, we won't have any floods, because if we do, everyone in Union Bridge is going to be lost and won't know how to get out of Union Bridge because there's, believe it or not, the last time the water was up on Main Street, I had people that had lived in Union Bridge five and six years, still did not know how to get around Shepherd's Mill Road to get out of town. So if we have a flood, I don't know how I'm going to tell them to get out of town, because they're going to be lost. So just look around and find your other ways of renting out around town, just in case we do have bad weather. But the county told us that they're planning on having it done in two months, so we'll see what happens.
Hold it to them.
So, okay. Our next work session, we have scheduled for May the 14th, and our next council meeting will be early next month. It'll be May the 21st because of going, Memorial Day weekend will be the last of the month. So instead of coming here Memorial Day, you can go to the Union Bridge Fire Company and spend your money. The fire company would be greatly appreciated in several of the towns. So those guys do a marvelous job over there and put a lot of hours in, so we need as many people come out and spend their hard-earned money as possible that week, so.
Have we heard anything about the VFW program?
Have not heard, but I assume that they will have Memorial Day service. I'm not sure that's strictly theirs, and we haven't heard anything yet, so.
Okay.
I'm assuming they'll have one on Memorial Day as normal. I would hope so. And speaking of that, Union Bridge Brother and Church did a wonderful job for Easter Sunrise Service. I know we had a lot of awes in Union Bridge, and people in town thought it was awful that we didn't, that the town didn't have it at the community center, which we stopped having that there because had not been for Laura bringing her huge family there. The last couple of years, it was Laura's family and Edgar, Donald, myself, and a couple of people from the town, and we got down to having like 12 people at the, at the service. This year, the Brother and Church had it, and they had 59.
59 people.
59 people there, well-attended, so next year, let's hope it's better. But, you know, me being my selfish person, and I am, some of the people were telling me they thought it was a shame that we stopped having it at the community center, were people that I've never seen at the community center in the last 25 years I've been going there. So it's a shame we stopped having it, but if it's a shame, those people should be coming. So, sorry, that's the way it is. So we'll look forward to the Brother and Church having that again next year for us, and hopefully the crowd will even get a little bit larger, because it's not just for the Brother and Church, it's for the community. So it's community involvement. Is there anything else before us tonight? Okay, and that, we're in line for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing on orders, if they rise.
Aye.
No's, okay. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
I drop all kinds of things out of my pockets all day.